I call the meeting in the Willet's City Council order. Could we all rise and join the chief slash city manager?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public communication this evening? Items that are not on the agenda? No action will be taken? Any comments? Sure. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Take one break here. Roll call.
Councilmember Strack?
Yes.
Strom?
Yes.
Ornstein?
Here.
Neffert?
Here.
So, hi. My name is Heidi Hader. I'm from the Willet's Bridge and I am here to invite you to an event we are having this weekend called Reeds Across America where we are going to honor the veterans that have passed. The ceremony will be this Saturday, December 12th, starting at nine o'clock at the cemetery on Highway 20. This ceremony is being held at the same time across the United States. Locally, it is being held in Ukiah, Potter Valley, Cloverdale, and Fort Bragg. We are still looking for veterans to participate in this ceremony. So, please tell any veterans you know in the area and how to contact me or Heidi Hader. I hope to see you all this Sunday honoring the veterans that are buried at the Willet's Cemetery by placing a wreath on a gray tie. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, do you have a contact number?
Yeah.
6435. 459-6435. And it's nine o'clock Saturday morning on the Highway 20 Cemetery, not the one out in the valley. Okay. Thank you. You did a good job. Are there any other public communications this evening? I seem a little shy on public this evening. So, then I will move along to our public matters portion of our agenda and we'll open up the nomination and appointment of mayor.
I would like to make a nomination. Bruce Burton for mayor.
I'll second that.
Do you have any others? We have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Strack?
Yes.
Strom?
Yes.
Ornstein?
Yeah.
I'd be honored. So, now we will open up the nomination and appointment of vice mayor. And I would like to nominate the incumbent, Ron Ornstein.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for vice mayor? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Strack?
Yeah.
Strom?
Yes.
Neffert?
Yes.
Forgot me.
I know. Mr. Ornstein?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on at this, once again, the Johns Place discussion, possible action. I was reading this. Does this require an action or only if you wish to take an action?
No. I think only if you make a recommendation, but ABC will send us the license. They are independently taking notice and so the public is free to send them any challenges or any concerns they have.
I'd like to comment on this even though we beat this pretty well. In reading the resolution and the findings and everything, I guess, and maybe there's nothing we can do about this even into the future, but it seems to me that everything was based on environmental impacts. You know, the streams, the air, the water, the trees, whatever. And as I recall, we had two meetings where we discussed this and just about all of the public comment had to do with impacts to people, particularly school kids and, you know, neighbors and things like that. And I don't see any of that referenced in this resolution. And I, I'm not sure exactly, does the resolution go to ABC and do they look at this and, you know, use this as a guide or what is the purpose of all this?
Well, I think what it is, is the use permit is granted by the planning authority, which you were as you were sitting there. So, had you not granted the use permit, then they couldn't go to the next step of applying to ABC for the license.
Okay. Well, I understand that, but this also looks like, well, I guess it is an endorsement because it was voted three to two, but there still seems like there's something missing from the report. And I'm not saying that we should overturn it or take any action or anything like that, but it just seems like something is missing from the information that ABC is wanting to say.
Well, we didn't, when we have voted to approve the conditional use permit, we didn't ask that there be any modifications to the use permit that are reflected in here. I mean, I think the only, the one thing, I shouldn't say only, the one thing relative to the closeness to the school was the signage and that is, that is covered under item 21. But, you know, I think this, the, they couldn't really write anything other than what were the conditions of approval at the time that we heard the permit. If, if people wish to make their concerns heard beyond these chambers, I guess they could pursue whatever avenues they thought were appropriate to do that. That's not my, my job to direct them.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not looking to change this at all. I guess my concern is something that happens whenever we have a similar thing where we have a checklist of, you know, of concerns. And the checklist is usually, everything has to do with the environment, but there's nothing on that checklist that has anything to do with people, with the effect on people, no matter what the project is. And, I don't know. I guess that's a state mandate or something. It's just something doesn't seem right somehow.
Can you help them out, Glenn?
Well, I think so. There is an environmental checklist for going through the sequel process. You have a whole series of things that you have to check off and decide whether it meets that standard and is either a negative declaration or a mitigated declaration. So, there is that kind of checklist. But, in our conditions, the resolution is also finding that it's consistent, we, three to two vote, that found it consistent with the general plan and consistent with effect on surrounding property. So, there is a lot in here about effect on people, not just environment. We did not make a specific part of it regarding the school, but it was, you know, it was the three to two majority that felt that, given the conditions placed on the permit, that it was acceptable. So, I think we've already made our position, you know, in what we adopted and that that goes to the ABC and they, they can decide if they agree or not based on their checklist.
I agree. I'm not.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I'm not looking to change anything here. I guess it's more for the future. And I guess we can deal with that.
Yeah. I mean, to the degree that it's within our authority to add conditions to a conditional use permit, then the time, the appropriate time to do that is certainly during that moment. I mean, I get your point that the environmental checklist has a lot more to do with the physical world and the emotional world.
Okay.
We just, is there any, I see no motion here to take any action on this item, so it's just information at this point. We were going to move on. So, the Chessers, you're, you were on the agenda tonight. There's no action needed by the council. No action was taken by the council. It's between you and the ABC at this point, so.
And I guess, Bruce, just for clarification, with a lot of these licenses, especially with existing licenses, or in this case, it was an application for a license for someone who already had a license that is moving to another location, this is your public notice to the community, so that's what was accomplished today.
Do we need to?
No. We don't, there's no action required, but this, this is the purpose of it being sent. ABC sends it to us with the intent that.
Right. Usually I see this on the consent count or on information should not be. So, we don't need to have a public, any kind of public.
No. No. I mean, unless they, unless what was being sought was an oversaturation finding and that wasn't the case here.
Okay. So, I'm going to move along. We're going to move up to the consent calendar. Are we pulling just the minutes of November 10th?
No. All of them.
All of them. Okay. So, the minutes are.
I shall move on to consent calendar.
So, we have item C.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I just wanted to point out that there was a revision on the IVW item or B that just wanted to make sure that council members and the public were looking. There is a revision on those numbers, the impact on our budget.
Right. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Can we have a roll call vote on it, please?
Councilmember Strack?
Yes.
Strom?
Yes.
Ornstein?
Yes.
Neffert?
Yes.
The one other comment I wanted to make, I'm sorry, I was trying to make all my comments by phone earlier, but the appendix K that's included in item 4D has reference to a whole lot of facilities and properties that are not in the city limits.
Yeah. It was kind of Willet's.
Area.
Willet's area. And so, same with Ukiah and Fort Bragg, there's some that are listed. So, when we sat and met with the other agencies, I think Alan Filari was part of that meeting when we were doing this, and we met with some of the stakeholders in the community for people to identify these areas. And that's, because it's a countywide plan, but.
It's like zones rather than city limits that they're talking about.
So, instead of taking out what's there, also in that, there are some that also need to be updated in there also that we're going to be updating.
I would like the location of the hospital.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, there's informational reports on warrants, building inspection, and licensing of water usage. Rights to appeal persons are dissatisfied. Decisions, city council may have a right to review that decision by court. Cities adopted 1094.6, a code of civil procedure which generally limits to 90 days of time within decisions, city boards and agencies can be judicially challenged. We'll move along right up to the city manager report with some recommendations. I see there is one item, there may be an update on emergency preparedness. Do you have that, Jerry?
Yeah. And basically, we are continuing our work with updating our emergency plan. We've been in contact with Steve Francis who retired. He used to be the coordinator for the ambulance, ambulance in Sonoma, Mendocino County, and now he's actually kind of on the circuit teaching emergency preparedness. So, Adrian and I have spoken with him about doing a training for city employees who have not had the required NIMs training and opening it up to our neighboring agencies here. So, and then the other thing, I think, and I'll let Rod speak to it too, but we've been doing some storm prep and working with OES on kind of tracking the storms that they start to come through. I kind of want to put it out, the city will, have one plan to put out a sandbag station, but we've been getting calls on this. And we provide sandbags in the event of an emergency, but if you think you have a problem, you should probably be out there buying your sandbags and dealing with your problem because what we'll provide you, we try to limit them to about 10 sandbags per person. And when we set up the sandbag station, and if you're coming to get them when we put these out, it's probably too, a little too late at that point. So, I kind of want to put it out there that people should be prepping for this. If it's flooded before, there's a likelihood it's going to flood again and they should take those precautions. So, and I think that's what I got.
Okay. So, I have a little note here that it looks like we want to hold off 9:08 or a little later in the evening, hoping some people will make it into town by soon.
Oh, Rod, I mean, sorry.
Do you have something else under?
Yes. Actually, I just found a note from Adrian here. Said, said, "Please announce," she said, "that Dusty Dooley will officially be joining the city as our new full-time city planner effective January 18th. Until then, he will continue to be here half-days per week during the interim period and within his limited hours. He's been our contract planner from the county. He will immediately begin actively participating in the Main Street corridor and Haseman Plan and he will play a key role in this project going forward." So.
Good.
Sorry.
Yeah. Maybe making another announcement later on. Welcome aboard, Dusty. I bet you're not here soon. He seems like a sharp young man. I'm happy to see him. And we've got a lot on our plate here in the next 24 months that I think we can certainly use the help. So, I guess, put on your chief's hat here, Jerry, and let's talk about your proposal to adjust entry-level police recruit salary level.
I'm looking to modify. Currently, we pay $12.32 an hour for a recruit. We haven't touched that since 2008 when we sent an officer through. The likelihood we are going to have to send somebody to the academy is becoming more relevant and it sounds like everybody in the county has got some sort of entry-level program. We just need to catch up our salary, but we, instead of just pumping up the salary figure, we, likelihood we might attract somebody with some related law enforcement experience would be preferable for us. We can get the maturity or somebody that maybe is already a range master or already has some experience. I'd like to not lock us into the lower salary for them as opposed to somebody just off the street that's maybe just out of college that's got no law enforcement experience. And so, we kind of checked with the other agencies. The Sheriff's Department, I think I listed their salary. And they do send their corrections officers or other folks who at a higher rate. Fort Bragg salary is listed there at $20 an hour. Ukiah I didn't list, but they actually hire you as a police officer and I'm not recommending that because if the individual gets hurt under 40 or 50, it could lock us into having the position frozen for a year while they're convalescing.
This is, if I got this correct, this is what, if we recruited, you recruited, city recruited somebody to go to the academy, this pays them a, we're covering their, we're covering their academy costs, but we're also covering paying.
But, we're not paying the medical, it's a, what's the word we use here, Susie? A non-benefited.
Non-benefited.
Non-benefited position. So, it's kind of like a scholarship leg up. And I, by way of explanation, I went through this way 29 years ago. And the city paid us to go through, but again, no benefits. We went through the academy, they picked up our hotel and academy costs, and then when we got out, then we moved into the actual police officer position.
So, the $14 an hour if it's a new recruit basically would be while they're going to the academy?
Right.
Yeah.
So, they wouldn't actually.
It's not the opening wage for.
No.
So, so. I'm sorry.
I'm done.
So, this would be strictly, they're hired to go to the academy. They don't go on patrol or anything like that.
No, no. And this would only be using an existing, for example, if we had an opening right now in lieu of filling it with somebody that, that already has an academy out there. And again, we have not been getting very good showing as far as applications. And then when we do, they're not passing backgrounds. This gives us a little more of an option for identifying maybe somebody local that wants to stay in the area. That's kind of what I'm looking for. I mean, I kind of look, I think the city got their money's worth out of me, but the biggest issue, I don't think I'd be looking towards somebody from out of the area to send through. I'd be looking at focusing on somebody local.
You have better control.
Yeah. So, that's what I'm looking for.
Well, I'd open this up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this? Just because I think we've been discussing.
Move approval of the recommended action.
I'll second.
Motion and a second for the recommended action. This does not have a real budget consequence to it.
No. In fact, it would be a savings because they would bring this person through because they can't hire someone so they're short of person.
And also, our post-cost for sending the academy are not 100% covered, but the state reimburses us for the academy costs.
Oh, okay. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilmember Strack?
Yes.
Strom?
Yes.
Ornstein?
Yes.
So, let's move along to a discussion on possible action to authorize the filing of a special assessment lien on a property located 620 South Coast for recovery of both enforcement costs and administrative claims. John, I've seen your detailed.
Extensive.
Extensive report. Looks like you've been on property trouble with for several years.
Yeah. Over seven years. And we've never successfully achieved 100% compliance. This is one of those things where we get almost to it and go crashing back down.
Has there been any developments on this property since this was adjourned? Or this is written up?
No. But, there is what looks like some impending developments. I've talked with Ms. Watts about this. I informed her of the meeting tonight via telephone. She chose not to be here. She, she has informed us that foreclosure looks imminent at this point. And we have put an awful lot of effort into this one piece of property. And basically, the idea of filing the lien at this point is to secure our position.
Any comments here?
I'll move approval of the recommended action, placing a lien on the property. I think John has tried his utmost to avoid pulling that, Rod.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any public comment on this lien on a property with nuisance abatement? I think that's what we're calling.
There's actually more than that in current fines due as well, so.
Do the, do the fines keep accruing or do, once the lien is placed, this sort of tops out?
Well, my understanding of it is that we're, we're going to go ahead and land it and that's going to be it.
That'll be it. Okay.
Motion and a second. Any other further discussion up here? Let's try another vote. We're moving around.
Councilmember Strack?
Yes.
Strom?
Yes.
Neffert?
Yes. I'm sorry, we have to take these kind of actions.
Thank you for all the information on that. I really tried to find another way.
So, Public Works in Engineering. Discussion of possible approval of construction contracts with flex liner for installation of a tank liner on a 3 million gallon water tank not to exceed $210,000. $2,010,000. $210,011, $711. Figure out how to say that.
Sort of sticks in your craw.
So, we budgeted this for, we had $300,000 in the budget to complete this repair. And a lot of this work was done a couple of years back as far as figuring out what the best, what the best alternative for repair was. The other option that is mentioned in the agenda summary was to actually get in and clean out the, clean the tank, spot repair, and have it sprayed on the inside and it would have actually, would have taken two to three months, I believe was the estimate. And based on the proposal that was received for that type of repair, they, they proposed a five-year and a 10-year service plan to spread the costs over that amount of time. I believe the five-year total was $672,000. And for 10 years, it would have been 1.23 million. $1,228,000 for the other option.
Oh, the other option.
For, so, and then it would also require draining the tank every other year to do visual inspection and spot repairs. So, with the flex liner option, it's prefabricated, brought on site. We should only be down, be down for about three weeks, we're anticipating. And we will be supplying the city with water directly from the million and a half gallon tank at the reservoir and the groundwater treatment plant as necessary.
You do this during the low demand time of year?
Yeah. Yeah. So, we submitted a plan to Division of Drinking Water in February to have, to do this in January and February of 2016.
Can you use any of that water for your flushing program?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know if that's logistically possible.
Well, if you drain the tank down, you're going to have to, you're going to have to waste a lot of water, that's all.
Right. So, I guess on, the first, the first time we drain, we could, we're going to have to dechlorinate and this, like, once it's filled back up the first time, we'll superchlorinate and then that water's going to have to go into the sewer system and be dechlorinated to a certain level so we can.
So, I have a question, more just a technical maybe question. The tank has a top on it, right?
Right.
And so, it has some sort of access hole in the side. You drain it and you undo some bolts and you can climb inside it. Is that the way it works?
I believe it's in the top. Yeah.
It's in the top?
Yeah. I think that's, I don't know. I'd have to.
Well, I just wondered how you get, this liner is obviously got to be a continuous.
Right.
Bowl liner, though it must fit around the, it must be a flange adapter so that you can get the water out of it.
They actually, well, they roll it up, the liner, they roll it up at the factory to a size small enough to get into the, to the.
From the top.
To get in, inside that hole. So, they know that, we had to provide them with the dimensions of that opening so that they could, they could have it rolled small enough to get the, the big pieces down in there. Then it's welded and then it's, you know, the.
Oh, it's constructed inside.
Right.
No. Actually, according to their description, it's constructed at their plant. The only thing that's done on site is the nozzle, liner is welded on.
Well, they also. Maybe I misread that larger pieces were.
Well, it doesn't.
Or maybe it's two pieces. There are hayes or something.
Right. So, the larger pieces are.
Is it, is it essentially a balloon or is it just a side and bottom liner?
Oh, that's, I don't know. I can't answer that one.
Okay.
If you, if you read the description of installation, it sounds like after they have packaged it small enough to get it inside, that they're going to have J-bolts around the perimeter and basically lift the sides up. That's what it sounded like to me.
Yeah. It sounds.
So, I don't think there's going to be a top to it.
Well, there could still be a top.
There wouldn't have to be because the water wouldn't reach the top.
Well, the thing of it is, is that it could, I guess the other deal is, is that this thing is going to sweat. I mean, the work, the problem with our tank is that it's rusting, right? This will not stop the tank from rusting. It'll stop rusty water from being in our water, but you'll have condensation between the membrane and the tank.
There's a piece that goes in there from what it says in the literature.
The geotech material.
To take up the, the air and whatever that's in there. That's what it says. I mean, I have no way to know that.
Well, basically, you're using like, well, I think Bruce said the word balloon kind of a thing that's going to hold the water. It's this big water.
Bladder.
Bladder, exactly. That's going to hold the water and theoretically, the water will not reach the tank except sweating perhaps.
But sweating is all it takes.
No, it's going to be, it's going to be that. It's going to have some kind of condensation.
So, that brings up the question, what happens? I mean, the steel will continue to deteriorate?
Well, unless this, this inner liner that Larry's talking about somehow. I mean, I think it's an effective tool, but I'm just curious about. I mean, I think it's an effective tool, but I'm just curious about, do you know something, John?
Well, you need airspace for condensation to occur. If this thing actually bonds to the outside wall, condensation can't occur.
Oh, yeah, it can. I think, yeah, absolutely.
It's two surfaces.
Well, we used to make, I worked for a company that did line tanks. And what we did is we actually adhered the lining, of course, this was 30 years ago. We adhered the lining to the tank, sandblasted the tank, adhered it, did spark testing to make sure that everything was secure and that's the way it was left. So, this is probably a new technology, it's a little less expensive. I guess I raised the question, if this is a quarter of a million dollars for this and going the other route, and I guess it really wouldn't pay, would the other route last more than four times longer than this would?
What, was they ever life?
15 years was the design last, that was given.
So, I guess it would be unreasonable to consider spending a million dollars and it's going to last 60 years. I mean, I guess it's simple math.
Well, I don't think, that tank is, what is that tank, 15, 20 years old? No, it's older than that.
I believe it's like almost 40.
Is it?
I don't think anything.
It's been there.
Yeah, there is a typo on the first page in their proposal. It says concrete, it's not, it's not concrete.
That's what I was thinking about.
Well, I'm not an expert at it. If you guys have looked at it and you've determined that this is a, this is a cost-effective way of preserving our 3 million gallon tank.
I also agree that this seems like the most cost-effective way to do it. One thing that I was a little, I guess slightly concerned is how much they warranty this product so that if we go ahead and use this and then, you know, three or four or five years down the road, we find out that the steel is corroding and rusting and whatever, or that they're, you know, in other words, it's not preventing that deterioration from happening. They do say that they, they warranty it for materials and that they would, if it's not holding when they first put it in, they will reinstall at no cost to us. But it does not cover any additional cost for testing, to finalize and complete installation, or if there's any loss of income or productivity or liability or anything else. I mean, if something went wrong and the water had contaminants from it or whatever, you know, their liability appears to be limited and their.
I think what they're saying is that it's our responsibility to disinfect the water before it's put back to the system. They're not taking any liability in that, in that regard, so.
Yeah, I just, it, okay. It looks like something we could argue about if something happened.
Something happened.
That we would be stuck going, well, wait a minute, is this covered by your assurances or not?
I have one other comment, concern, question. It's under the recommended action. It calls for down payment of $42,870. And according to the warrants, that check was written in the middle of November.
Yeah, in order to get on the schedule, we had to, we had to submit a down payment last month and.
So, we haven't, I mean, obviously, we haven't voted yet, but hypothetically, if we do not pass this, what would happen to that money?
Then we'd have to.
Pardon?
I don't know exactly, I don't know what our, what our refund possibilities are on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure.
I'll take it.
Is there any public comment? Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Stacey.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Never.
Yes.
Saved $42,000.
We've needed to do something with this tank.
Absolutely, I would, I would ask that our lawyer look at what they're warranting, how specific it is and whether it looks like we wouldn't end up in a bad case if something went wrong.
Well, we're going to ask that they sign our standard contract, right? And so, this is basically going to be a attachment or exhibit to the standard city contract that requires guarantees of their workmanship. And if they are unwilling to sign that contract, we'll, we'll be back before you again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a handful of other things.
Good.
On water storage, reservoirs are starting to go up again. We're 20 acre feet more today than we had November 10th. So, I have a feeling tonight and tomorrow, we're going to see a significant increase in our, in our storage in Morrison Centennial. We're supposed to get some pretty good, pretty good rainfall.
What is it?
What's that?
How many acre feet?
20 acre feet increase since.
What was the total?
20 acres feet more than.
633, we're at.
Okay, thanks.
48% capacity right now. So, we have.
Did you say 48% of capacity?
Yeah.
Is that all? Boy, it seems like more.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
All this rain.
Well, I mean, just looking at the surface, it seems pretty high, you know, you see Centennial Lake.
Well, most of this rain has fallen north, the bulk of it, even though we've gotten some and that's what we've been following. So, I think most of that, if it falls north of us, flows north as opposed to.
But I mean, if you look at the, at the reservoir, as you speed by at 65 miles an hour, it looks like, you know, higher than it had been like last year.
Last year, this time, we had, I think we were over 1,000 feet, so. Last year, we had some more significant storms in November. And then we had the big one December 12th, I think is what it was.
Probably the top four feet of the, of the Centennial reservoir is 50% of the water, probably.
Yeah, capacity wise, that's where your storage is.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's true.
And with four years of drought, a lot of the rain is going into the soil.
Right, so it was just Saturday night that the creeks really started to come up. It's Saturday, just over, we got an inch and a quarter, I think, or something like that at Howard Station. So, the creeks started to rise. Last night, creeks are muddy, so that's, that's good.
Anything else?
Yeah, just an update on our boil water notice that I believe everybody's heard about that went out on Monday. On Sunday night, we had a leak on Walker Road by the trestle, quite a ways out Walker Road. And that leak was fixed on Sunday night. And what, what, what happened because of that leak is the tank at Berry Hill up by Centennial completely drained because it's 42,000 gallons, it doesn't take much to empty that tank. So, as a result of that tank emptying and being exposed to atmosphere, we were given, we were left with two possible courses of action. Fill the tank, notify the residents, the affected residents out there that they needed to boil their water for potentially up to a week, is what we put in the notice, until we could get back, our back tea tests that showed that there was no contamination. So, we contacted, Monday morning, we contacted the Division of Drinking Water. They agreed with our, our choosing that route to notify the residents. Our other possibility was to superchlorinate the tank and shut it down for possibly two days and that would have left all of those residents without water. So, that obviously was not a good alternative. So, in Monday morning, we put together the boil water notice and hand-delivered those notices to, I believe, about 18 affected residences and connections. We call one of those, one of those was Cal Fire. And we hand-delivered the notice to those that we could, one of those being Cal Fire, that we were able to say, this is the situation, explain, you know, explain that it only affected the southern portion of Walker Road and that we would notify them when the boil water notice was going to be canceled. And it could, I believe they were told that we could be able to resolve it in 48 hours, hopefully. And that said, somebody, how do I say it? Whoever was given the notice decided, this is, decided to pass it on through email and I don't know what the message was, but the fine print at the bottom of the notice was read by one of the recipients and the description of the problem was not communicated effectively to that person. So, that person took it upon themselves to notify the school district and the school district took it upon themselves to notify everybody as they possibly could. So, we put out a press release, letting everybody know that there was a misunderstanding and I think everybody, the situation was resolved. We received our second test back today around 4:30, saying clear of all, any contaminants, no health hazards. And this evening, before the meeting started, between 5:30 and 6:30, Sean and Logan handed out the cancellation notices to all the affected residents, residences south of town.
Just a point of curiosity, the, the, the press release, how does that get out to the public? I mean, I saw an email that came from the city managers and from you, but how does the public get? You don't print a special bulletin, do you?
Facebook.
Okay.
It's there in radio stations.
Website, yeah.
Okay.
It was out on the radio, I think it was on radio this morning, exactly what the situation was.
Yeah, I heard that.
It was on yesterday, too.
Yeah.
So, in the future, we may just go straight to press release and let everybody know that where the, where the problem is located
Okay, good.
Unnecessary.
Panic.
We have to have a panic every.
And it's more of a precautionary warning, so. That said, on the wastewater side, our meters for our new influent meter project are installed. The new Mill Creek meter is in and we have real-time data available for flows from Brooktrails. And I haven't, we haven't passed on the link and all the information yet, but I'm going to send that out tomorrow. And so, Brooktrails and whoever can access that data, by next week, we'll have, we'll have the inflow meters at the wastewater treatment plant, sending data to the same website, it should be next week, it'll for sure be by December 31st as required to do. But, so we'll have all that data available on the same website so it can be accessed. You can see how the flows increase and decrease and see how much, how much the rain affects everybody's flows.
Yeah.
That's a good one. Public Works has been working on storm drain everywhere and trying to clear storm drains, keep everything going. They did a nice job at Meadowwood and Mendocino. It's been a longstanding problem, some bad, bad hydraulic design combined with old rotten pipes. And we've come up with a different solution and if you drive by, you'll see a new headwall and some new pipes and we're going to see how it works tomorrow, so. Other than that, with our new restructuring, one of the positions created was the utility superintendent. And through a lot of discussion amongst Adrian, myself, and JC and all those involved, and with JC's recommendation, I think from, before I started, we put the utility superintendent out for internal recruitment and we had one application from Scott Herman. And very excited to say that Scott put together a good application and he's going to be the utility superintendent starting next Monday.
And what exactly does that entail?
He's going to be responsible for water and wastewater from operations to collections to distribution.
Nice.
This gives him a several-year mentorship, I think that's going to be, going to be a very good, very good long-term value to the city.
Yeah, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow for Scott and JC and Steve and myself to talk about JC working in a support role and helping Scott transition. And overall, I think it's a very positive, positive change for the city, so.
Congratulations.
I have one comment. Linda, in addition to all the strong drain work that is really obviously improving the situation a lot, but I noticed there's also been a lot of potholes built. I listened on West Mendocino just, or today, some fairly significant pothole tipped in. Looked films, kept.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to get a camera down the storm drain lines there and see if there's possibly some bad, some bad CME.
The potholes are because of leakage underneath or something, yeah?
We want to find out because that's, there's pretty good, there's pretty good potholes there that came up, so.
Hey, Rod, you're also working with OES on the tree issue, right?
Right, right.
This tree issue.
Well, maybe I'll let him.
That's, I believe it was in October, the governor, and I, and I just, I skimmed it because I just got it on, in the email the other day, that there was funding available for removal of dead or dying trees caused by the drought we're facing. And so, there would be some cost sharing or some funding available to help us remove those trees. So, we're putting together a cost estimate and identifying, identifying some trees that we could be, we may, we need to take out and hope that we could possibly.
And I think it also provides for some, I guess, dispensation about some legalities too, I believe.
Yeah.
If they meet the criteria.
Right.
I have one more question for you, Rod. You mentioned, you reminded me of something when you talked about storm drains. I noticed, at least in one place that I've noticed, in the Safeway parking lot, there is these horizontal drains and the one in front of the gym is clogged with leaves and everything. That's not the city's responsibility, is it?
No.
But is there any kind of, I don't know, outreach or something? Because if those drains are clogged, those stores are going to get flooded. I mean, how do we fit into that picture if we do it all?
Call Victor.
Yeah, that may, probably goes to the property owner.
Okay, and that's, that's clear cut and.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have, I mean, we have quite a bit to deal with.
Yeah, okay.
But one other project that's coming up is that we're going to work on Becca Road and fixing that, that, we're sliding off, that kind of sinkhole right by the PG&E yard.
I think we can throw a couple kudos out to the scum train for the work they did along Walnut Street and brush clearing along that drainage ditch, all the way up to Blossom Lane. Should, I mean, that is a chronic flooding spot for us.
Right.
I would assume by getting a bunch of the vegetation out of there, it'll help water. flow. I don't think they really reditched it or anything, but they did, they didn't, they needed to do it for fire.
But Chamberlain Creek, those, that did.
Well, they did this, they did this themselves.
Chamberlain Creek did ours, kind of our side, went through there, so cleaned it up.
Anything else?
Ted.
Okay.
And Susie, what do you think?
Let's do this, and if we need to, we'll get him on the phone. How's that work?
Sure, we'll do it, it's another.
Does that work?
You don't think that there's Ukiah or?
I think he's close, because he was in San Diego, but it's quarter to six.
He should be here by now. Well, let's, we'll cruise along, and we can come back to it any time, as long as we get, you know, if, if he gets here. MCOG?
MCOG was Monday.
Oh, yeah, I never heard.
It was a very interesting meeting. We had, the coast wanted to cut off the funding for the, the funding, the county's funding for the freeway, and that part of it. And so we had quite a lively discussion, and all of the people from Cal Trans that we have been in contact with all the time, all came, and it was a big group of people that came. The large person that, that is from, what's his name? Anyhow, he's from the state, came.
Charlie Fielder?
No, not Charlie, this is the large, real large guy.
Like Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff Wright?
Yeah. And he came and answered a lot of questions, but the interesting thing is that we were informed, because I mentioned that it was part of the thing of taking the road over Highway twenty, Highway twenty, Highway one oh one from the North City Limits all the way to Highway twenty, that Cal Trans had agreed to take and do Sherwood Road. And I was told that in that meeting, that there were four things that were brought out to the city people that were in there, and one of them, and they call them Child's Projects, and one of them was that the Sherwood Road, the other one was Ryan Creek, which for the salmon, co-host salmon, the other one was the mitigation wetlands, and the fourth one was, and they mentioned it, and I can't remember what it was, but there was four of them. So I contended that the person that dealt with the relinquishment from the city had no idea that any of these things had happened. Anyhow, it got everybody pointing fingers at everybody else. Well, anyhow, the low, the thing about it is that the people from the coastal area finally voted for leaving it the way it is, that the contribution from the county, and when it went to a vote, the thing that was interesting to me is the city of Ukiah voted against it.
When you said leave it the way it is, you mean fifteen percent of, no matter how many overrun.
Okay, now that brings up an interesting thing. They said that the wetlands are going to take ten years, is what they're banking on, that, that it's going to take ten years to do the wetlands and get everything growing correctly. And if anything doesn't grow correctly, then they're going to come back to Mendocino County and say, okay, you need to cough up your money, and we're going to plant the other plants or trees, or whatever is not, that is not living. So it looks to me like that Mendocino County has, going to take the wetlands on for eternity.
Well, the, the, what, what this is, is it's the, it's a, there, there is no STIP allocation now, as I understand. There's no two thousand and fifteen STIP allocation. There is not going to be, there isn't expected to be one for several years.
Well, it's going to be a long time before we pay anything off, yeah.
But this share, local share match, they're, they're looking to impact a future STIP allocation, which they, doesn't even exist yet, for three hundred and twenty-five or three hundred and seventy-five thousand, three seventy-five thousand, as the local share, for the budget amounts for the, for those, the mitigation, the Sherwood Road project, the, the.
And the Ryan Creek.
Ryan Creek, and, and I think it, the fourth may be the relinquishment, leaving in state give or pay thing.
That is correct.
That may be it. And so that is, you know, it, it certainly was not made clear to us in the relinquishment negotiations that these monies would be tied to, you know, a, a local match.
Beyond what was already provided.
Well, didn't even, you know, the funding goal, I think, wasn't, don't, you know, we were interested in, weren't, didn't even really go there, so. But I'm glad that, way to go Larry, you got it through. Congratulations on that, I, because I know the coast has been, you know, everybody's getting a little more territorial, you know. My, my point really is, at least in the terms of the Sherwood Road improvement project, it, it really improves traffic circulation for county residents. It is, the city has six or seven, maybe eight homes on Sherwood Road, and.
Well, I told them all of that, and I said that the five thousand people that live up Sherwood Road are the ones that use it, and they're in the county.
Yeah.
And in fact, I had the person that's in charge of, can't think of her name now, from Sherwood Road or Brook Trails. She came and spoke.
Oh, Denise Rhodes?
Yeah, Denise, and spoke and said that it was very, very necessary, and that we really needed to do something about that. And I thought that was very nice. I thanked her for coming and, and doing that. I thought that was an excellent thing that she did.
Well, good, that's a, it's the best outcome I think you could hope for out of it.
I wanted to ask a couple questions about, what was, what was the actual vote?
The vote was, everybody except Ukiah voted to continue the fifteen percent.
Okay. My understanding, and I am not sure if it's accurate, but I, I thought that the original allocations or budget estimates by Cal Trans included the final project, because it, it wasn't the, the contract with DeSylva Gates and Flatiron is not the entire budget that Cal Trans already asked for, and that we, the local MCOG, already put in fifteen percent for.
Okay, I'm telling you that, that's not the way that it came out.
Well, I know that then, since then, there have been, there is an overrun that was about a fifty percent overrun, that was already approved by MCOG for our fifteen percent about sometime in the last year. So what I'm concerned about is I don't think this is the best possible outcome. I think this is draining all of our county funds forever, and that it's Cal Trans that is responsible for the overruns, not MCOG. We have no ability to keep them on budget, but it seems like we have our blank check for fifteen percent of any overruns that they have, and, and I think there were all sorts of opportunities to keep this project on budget, and they, they, Cal Trans, is responsible for that, not MCOG, and not our county taxpayers, and not our roads that aren't going to get fixed for decades. So I think it's a terrible outcome, and I'm sorry I didn't know that that was on the agenda, but I, I really think that it was time for us to say, we've already ponied up for one cost overrun that was major, and it's time to say, Cal Trans, this is your baby, pay for the rest of the overruns yourselves. It's not going to benefit.
I look at it a little differently, but that's, we're going to that.
Well.
We could talk about where we, where all the overruns came from, too.
Well, I can tell you quite a few of them.
I can, too.
Yep. Anyway, I, I am sorry I didn't know about the meeting. I would have at least been able to say something at that meeting, had I realized that that was on the agenda, but, anyway, I wanted to take that.
Yeah, you have every right.
We are not all willing to write a blank check.
What about LAFCO?
She's gone.
Yeah. MTA?
MTA will be meeting tomorrow, not at the usual time, but at ten in the morning at the Ukiah Conference Center, and talking about unmet needs, and how our budget's doing, and continued movement to get more electric vehicles and solar improvements, so, you know, going on.
I would, yeah. I would suggest there's a difference between unmet needs and unmet wants.
Well, the unmet needs are, are basically sort of a wish list, which, you're right, some of them are wants, and the budget of MTA limits what we can actually do, so.
Yeah. EMSW?
Hasn't met in a while.
EDFC?
EDFC met last week, and there's, as usual, there's an awful lot going on. One of the things is that we, right now, EDFC is at a record high number of loans, so we are supporting quite a few enterprises in the county. One of them is our Scoops here in Willets, which is nice. That's, so loan activity is, is running very high and very successfully. The direct public offering, which allows local investors to invest money in the new Mendocino Wool Mill, is at about a hundred and seventy-five thousand in the fund now, and we have to make a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand by the, about the very beginning of February is the deadline for that. So anyone out there who has money sitting someplace where you would rather have it earn two percent and go into our local economy, talk to me about that. And they have just moved to a new office location, which is very nice, in the building that's sort of part of the Methodist, Ukiah Methodist Church, but it's separate from the church, and it's very nice, and there is an opportunity there for cowork facilities, where we're hoping that small groups of enterprises can, can share office space.
What, what are they offering as collateral for those loans?
Well, the loans, the, the specific one for the direct public offering, or the other ones?
Well, I mean, if you invest in this, and they lend it out, how are they collateralizing the lending?
It, it varies between the normal, the, most of the loans that are already in progress with EDFC, not including the direct public offering, those, there's a loan committee, they look at collateral.
I, I understand that.
There's also Cal Cap, which, which kind of guarantees.
I'm talking about this direct.
Oh, the direct public, public offering. Well, one of the reasons it's EDFC loaning the money instead of a bank is that it is not, there's not a whole lot of collateral, like, there's not a property that we could take over if they, if they fail. It is exactly the kind of thing that EDFC is designed to do, which is be a lender of last resort. So really, it's, it's about the review of their business plan, their cash flow, how reputable and how reasonable they are, and they, this business is in projecting what they think they can do. And, and I just want to mention that when we have these, we've had one, and we're going to have another forum here in Willets to talk about this investment, Matt Gilbert, who is the gentleman who's doing this Mendocino Wool Project, he really seems to have his act really together. He knows who his clients are, he knows who he's selling to, he knows what the costs are.
Okay, I just, I just was curious.
Yeah, there's a business plan.
There's another place that we can.
There's a business plan, and, and it is vetted by people that are experienced in vetting business plans. That's the short answer.
Thank you.
Sorry.
League of Californuses, she's gone to. Nothing in Water, Wastewater, rebate it?
Oh.
I think there's Finance, any other ad hoc committees? I don't think there's been anything that's met, other committee reports. I think we're running out of.
Okay, well, how about I just start, and if he shows up, great, and if there's questions, then we can contact him by phone.
Okay.
Got the sticker phone here, or I can get him on the phone.
All right, that's fine.
So since July, I've been working with Chris Perlitz with Municipal Capital Markets.
Let me just, let me just back up just a half a second.
Sure.
We're, we are, item.
Nine A one.
Nine A one, we're going to sticker, following along at home this evening.
And Sam Ballisi, who is trying to get here, but his plane was delayed, so he got into Oakland at three o'clock today, so you can just imagine. And he's bond counsel, and he's with Kutaq Rock, and he also worked with us when we were doing the Howard Foundation, so he's a known commodity. So since July, we've got, Chris has gone out to more than seven banks to see if he, we can do this refunding of our current note that has a five point one-two-five percent interest. And almost, well, all of the banks except for one wanted a one point two percent debt coverage ratio. We have a one point zero, and that's because a lot of things, but because Brook Trails was paying less on the, on the USDA loans, because the amount that they were paying monthly wasn't, was less than what they're paying now. In the future, our coverage will be higher, but we can only go on past, we can't say what's going to happen in the future. The, the banks weren't, weren't willing to look at it that way, except for this one, who was a Western Alliance. And Western Alliance has a, a credit team that does these types of financing, financing. And they were willing to accept our cash as working capital to make it, to make it easy. So if they set aside the cash in a separate account that says this will make up the one point two percent, then they're good with that. We get a four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar savings over the life of the loan. I think it's, it's tax-exempt funding that we're, we're doing it, so we actually get a discounted rate of, I think it's point four percent.
What does that mean, when you say, you get a discounted rate?
The interest rate, no, that is the discounted rate.
Susie, the, the current loan matures November first, twenty thirty-three.
Yeah.
Would this mature at the same time?
It would.
So we're looking at an eighteen-year loan, roughly?
Yes. Eighteen-year loan with reduced payments.
And so we're making, we're talking about saving the four hundred thousand dollars over the remaining.
Eighteen years.
Not bad. Can, can you explain something?
I'll try.
Yeah, I, I realize. On page twenty-two, section four point oh four, there's this thing called rebate fund, and I read it a half dozen times, and I still don't know if I understand what I'm reading. Could you shed some light on that?
So that's, that is the money that I was saying that we can, that we would set aside to make up the one point two percent. It's called a stabilization, it's stabilization fund, I believe is the terminology.
So this is money that we would set aside in case we run into trouble repaying the loan, we would have this money to throw into it, is that?
Well, it's set aside in order to count as revenue, right? So we're going to. Well, it's set aside in order to count as revenue, right? So, we're going to count, we're going to say we have this cash, we're going to count it as revenue in this, in this fund. Therefore, now our debt coverage ratio is higher.
Okay, sort of like a collateral kind of.
Right.
Well, we, we have that obligation with the present loan to have that, it's a year's worth of interest in principal or something like that.
One point one percent, one year plus ten percent.
All right, so that's in case.
To hold in case. That they actually held in a, it was in a, they, they had, I'm trying to think of it. It was held in like an escrow account that they could draw on if we failed to make a payment. So, I'm assuming that that's the money you're talking about, that then will continue to.
Except that it won't be in an escrow account. It'll still be in our checking account or our bank account, whichever one that we choose.
Is there a fee we have to pay the USDA to terminate the loan or to retire it?
No, no prepayment penalties.
Okay.
Are there prepayment penalties?
No. Hi, Sam.
We're just now.
Perfect, we're just talking, we're doing it right now.
We did everything else we possibly could.
I know.
No, no, we didn't do that. That was our, that was our last trans, but we're just getting started on discussing this refinancing package, so your timing is perfect.
Thank you.
And so.
So, the question was, is there a prepayment penalty on the loan that we're getting, taking from Western Alliance?
There's a, the way the financing works is that there's a period where you can repay. Can you kind of add to that?
Yes, yeah, thanks, Larry. Could you introduce yourself?
Absolutely.
We have actually a few people watching at home on TV, so.
Okay.
Microphone does not amplify in here, but it deputizes.
It works from the TV.
Okay. Sam Ballisi, partner with Cutac Rock. We're a bond firm for the most part, but do other things. So, the financing that you are, you know, looking into, entering into, does have what they call a call protection period. The call protection period basically says it guarantees the interest rate to the lender, the bank, for a period of ten years, and after that, it can be called par, basically at, at a hundred percent. So, there's no prepayment period, no prepayment premium after ten years, but for the first ten years, it's basically set and can't be called. I mean, you can defuse it, but generally, you're going to continue to make payments semi-annually, just.
Excuse me, you, you use the term it can be called. Does that mean in the first ten years?
It cannot be called.
It cannot be called?
It cannot be called in the first ten years.
And after, after ten years, this is an eighteen-year loan?
Correct.
So, during the following eight years?
Yes.
And by being called, it means they can say, send us the rest of the money?
No, no.
No.
It's the other side. Here, we're saying, the outstanding balance is two point five million. We found somebody else that either wants to lend it to us cheaper, or we got a big influx of cash and we.
That's absolutely correct.
So, we can't do that during the first ten years?
No, no. You, you have the right after ten years to call it, prepay it, as, as the mayor. If there's a cheaper source of financing for the remaining eight years, then you're able to refinance it and call it at par.
Good, thank you.
Is there anything that allows the lender to call it?
No. Oh, default, sorry.
Other than?
Correct.
I just see a section here on eminent domain.
You know, if, if, you know, for example, there are a couple of instances, you have, you know, an event of default that would allow them to basically accelerate it, but since it's only payable from net revenues of the wastewater system, they wouldn't typically accelerate it. So, if there's an event of default, more than likely, what happens is a default rate would kick in, so that's a slightly higher interest rate than what you would be getting. So, that's, that's when they can do something. If, if the, if the city or the county were to condemn the system, if you will, which is kind of the facilities where the system are located, and give you, give you money, you can prepay if there's condemnation proceeds, or if there are insurance proceeds, the same thing if the system is damaged and you decide not to rebuild it, again, pretty unlikely, then you can prepay as, as well. It doesn't allow them to, to call it at that point in time if there's damage or condemnation. It gives you the right, if you elect, not to replace the system.
Yeah, well, two, one question is that, right now, we are looking at a three point eight-four percent rate. Is the three point nine-four is the max we could be asked to pay for the whole eighteen years?
Actually, what we did is because, let me take a minute to explain this, if that's, if that's okay.
Of course.
The interest rate is basically set as, it's a formula based on what they call the ten-year treasury swap, swap rates plus, plus a spread. And so, you know, when we were preparing the reports and the documents, that was the rate, and we wanted to give ourselves just a little bit of room so that between then and when you actually set the interest rate, if it moved a little bit, we wouldn't be getting, we wouldn't have to come back for another approval. So, if we said it was three point eight-four, and it was three point eight-five, so the three point nine-four is basically the maximum that the council is approving, so we couldn't go over that.
Okay, and then once, once we approve it and we.
Once you set the rate.
Find the documents.
Yeah.
Then that's set for the whole eighteen years.
Eighteen years, yeah, exactly.
Then the other little question was, the following up on what Ronald Weinstein asked was, and what you were explaining, since we needed to have this cash reserve, or whatever we're going to call it, in order for them to qualify it based on our performance to date with the revenues, but if in the, like, next two, three years, we are actually at the one point two, will that requirement go away?
Absolutely, yeah. The rate stabilization fund is something that's frequently used by similar cities with wastewater or water systems to help them basically, you know, achieve that coverage ratio. And again, what you basically would do is you'd put money in there, and after you've met the ratio, you would take it back, you could take it back out, or you could leave it in there. It's kind of like a savings account that gets to count towards your coverage, but once you, once the system in and of itself, the net revenues generate sufficient revenues at one point two oh, then you do not need to do that.
Are we allowed to have revenues of one point two when we're supposed to only be charging enough to pay our costs? That's a sort of separate question.
I'm not sure what you're saying, because obviously, the revenues of the wastewater department are well over one point two of this debt. This debt is one, simply one obligation of the wastewater department. We have twenty-four million dollars of debt in the wastewater department, as well as all our operating expenses. So, revenues to the wastewater department are in the neighborhood of two and a half to three million dollars a year. So, this one point, this is not.
It's, it's not a question of charging more than what your costs are. I mean, you typically have to cover all your expenses and the net amount, the net amount after your gross revenues, kind of, which is all the revenue from the, from the operation of the wastewater system, minus the expenses and so forth. You get to a one point two, which means that you can adjust expenses, obviously. It's not a question of just charging more. Your rates, you cannot adjust the rates that you have now without necessarily going through kind of the Prop two eighteen process of sending it out. So, your rates are set. It's just a question. I think what you're operating at, or have been recently, is at one point oh three, so literally, you are just charging just enough to kind of cover your costs, and so there's not much of a cushion there. Most systems operate at a, at a one point two or one point two-five coverage ratio.
Well, I'm not entirely sure that I understand it completely, but I'm sure that you do, and it sounds okay.
So, the Fed is supposed to raise interest rates sometime this month. Will this affect this at all?
Once you approve it, you have the ability to lock in the rate literally tomorrow.
Okay.
And you can lock in the rate, and we would close, I think the expectation is that we would close the financing and pay off the US DDA on the twenty-second.
It is an absolute fixed rate with, with a max for the life of the loan?
For the life of the loan.
And yearly payments?
Semi-annual.
Semi-annual.
Semi-annual interest and annual principal, Suzy.
Semi-annual interest and annual principal.
Correct.
That's consistent with the way we.
Exactly, the same way we're doing it now.
What, what does it, what is it going to do to the, I mean, five hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, but over twenty years, obviously, it's only twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
It's, and actually, the.
So is it?
The, I think that the plan right now, though, that we may be able to adjust that, but I think the plan right now is to shorten the maturity.
The maturity, and so, so the rate, the payments stay the same.
So, the payments, no, you're going to save money every year. You'll save money every year, but instead of having the final maturity in 2033, the final maturity will be 2032. Is that right? Suzy, I think that's the. Let me take, let me take a peek at that.
Well, that would make sense.
Right, yes, exactly. So, what will, what will happen is two things. You'll save approximately, you know, in the, I think, in the seven to nine thousand dollar range annually, and then in 2032, it's almost like you have no payment in 2032 and no payment in 2033, which aggregate about three hundred and somehow a thousand dollars. So, the greatest savings are achieved by reducing the term and sort of eliminating those last two payments, rather than annual savings with, annual savings that are larger annually, as you said, maybe ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year over eighteen years, and it would only generate a certain amount of what we call net present value savings. And that's because the term is a little bit longer overall than when you, when you shorten it. And we're going to shorten the term by essentially, you know, that last, the 2032 payment looks like it's about twenty-four thousand dollars versus your current payment, which is two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And in. And two thirty, yeah, 2033, the current payment is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and that would be eliminated entirely.
So, almost all of that four hundred and twenty-six thousand net total savings over the life of the, of this loan is achieved in the last two years by shortening the term? A little bit each year?
A little bit each year, and then the bulk kind of in that last year by eliminating that payment and a little bit more, yeah. I think I was mistaken. That last payment is actually, the payment drops, but there's, the bulk of the four twenty-six, pardon, twenty-six thousand is in 2033, and then incrementally sort of the remainder of the years.
Is there a fee for, I mean, is this, is this the same thing as refinancing a loan?
Absolutely. You know, it's, this is actually not much different than refinancing your home loan.
All right, so, but there's usually a fee when you do that?
The fees are, the fees are built into the savings, so there are costs that the bank has, there are costs that the placement agent has, council, you know, us and council for the bank to review documents, so that's all.
All right, so these are the finished numbers. There's nothing else that's going to be coming in?
Right, exactly.
It's about a hundred grand.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I will move approval of the recommended action to, well, as recommended, to refund the city's sewer living bond.
Yeah, I'll second that. I mean, we did ask our financial director to look into this, and she came back with, you know, something that's not as well as can be expected, so I would second this.
Do we have any public questions, comments, input on this item? Everybody get a rundown in their pajamas. It happens. Okay, bring it back up here, and we have any other questions up here? We'll have a roll call.
Yes, I'm asking, Strong?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yeah. Well, long ways to come for a short.
It's my pleasure. It's, I wasn't sure I was going to quite make it, but.
It worked out fine.
How's the weather?
It's drizzly. Yeah, it's drizzly out there, but it'll be beautiful on the way back, I'm sure.
Stay and visit us for a day if you.
Yeah.
Labor lead.
Thank you.
Let's move along to council member reports and recommendations. I, I have a short report, I guess. This is going along with our discussion at the last meeting, I believe. We had, can't remember when we had this discussion, to tell you the truth, but it was, it was about pursuing senior water rights on, on the, in the watershed, and I have here in my little hot little hands, I think, some more very pertinent information on that.
What's that, some historical?
This is a title search of the.
Oh.
Of the watershed property that starts in nineteen oh five with that individual that was mentioned in the news article, Selfridge, and it goes from Selfridge to nineteen oh five to deed it to the Willets Water and Power. And in nineteen twenty, excuse me, in nineteen oh five, Selfridge sold it to the Willets Water and Power Company. In nineteen twenty-three, September twenty-first, Willets Water and Power sold the Central Mendocino County Power Company. Then in nineteen forty-one, Central Mendocino Power Company sold to California Public Service Company. And then in nineteen forty-five, California Public Service Company sold the Pacific Gas and Electric Company. And nineteen eighty-one, Pacific Gas and Electric Company sold at Clifford Darhorn. And by order of condemnation, the city of Willets versus Clifford Horn, nineteen eighty-four. There's the deeds.
All right, is that, that's Davis Creek Watershed.
That is the Davis Creek Watershed, the map, next, parcel numbers, everything included.
Nice. Who prepared?
Compliments of Mr. Neary.
Is that right?
So, a really valuable piece of work and service he did for the city on that.
Good.
Want to thank him for pursuing that for our part.
And on that topic, we are expecting a proposal from Alan Lilly that we could bring to the council in January on, on trying to establish some.
I have that in electronic format, so we could pass that along to Mr. Lilly.
Oh, sure. You'll send it to me on the fourth.
Okay.
I have.
Yes.
I would like to thank Brad Walton for clearing off the leaves and stuff on the north side of Mendocino, right from the first block on one oh one back to his place and the lot also. We had people that came to the store knowing that I was on the council that had fallen that the day of the rain on the leaves and stuff off of the sidewalks, and I had called the Public Works Department, and there was nobody there, but they were probably busy someplace, and so it stayed that way, and I didn't have anybody else come to the store other than a couple of people that came. And then Brad came out on Saturday and cleaned it off, plus the parking lot, and so it's, I think it's very nice of Brad to do that. Thank you.
Service above selling.
Do you have any other council member reports or any, any good?
I have something here. It's, there will be a chamber mixer on Friday, December eleventh, at eleven, at five thirty at the museum.
Museum.
And there will be a tree lighting ceremony, music fun, and light refreshments, and a special train demonstration and museum tours, and everybody is welcome, five thirty on this Friday.
And I'm looking forward to the whole weekend of the crafts fair, not the whole weekend there,
there, but for everybody to buy local and buy from their artisans and local craftspeople.
It's in here again, right?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a closed session item this evening. I'm going to have Jim explain it, because I believe it's the same entity and two issues.
Right, it's, it's the same cited litigation regarding Remco, two different issues. One of them involves issues regarding development of the site for which the mayor has previously declared a conflict, and he will excuse himself from that discussion. Our minutes will reflect when he does that. So we'll take the first item first, and all four of you can participate in that first item.
Okay, so we will recess to closed session. Any decisions made out of executive, out of that closed session will be reported back here when we, when we come out. Remco, things only been going on for 20 years, so I'm sure tonight will be the night it all gets resolved.